Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Laurel, would you please take?
We generally don't take role during work sessions.
We're all here.
All here.
Work session items, are there any public comments? Are there any public that would like to make public comments? I guess we can go right into discussion on recycling with Department Public Works Director Jeff McCula and Matt.
Who is it?
Well, Eddie of Republic Public Services. Thank you, Matt.
I think he's leaving me hanging. Council asked for this to be put in on an agenda, so we've got just some info- some basic information. I asked Matt to put together some information on the recycling industry in general. The, as you're aware, the current recycling is down at Manistee Catholic Central behind the school. We've got a partnership agreement with them. The city has a co-mingle dumpster down there. And Republic services that and empties it, I think it's twice a week. We do check that daily to make sure everything looks okay. Most of the issues that I've heard over the past probably year and a half have been with the cardboard portion of it. MCC has run that program for a number of years because they have a partnership with Packaging Corporation of America. Packaging Corporation of America pays them added value for the fiber or fiber content, the cardboard that they receive. And then they use that as a fundraiser and they use it for school trips and that sort of thing. So when the city reached out to them, they were very receptive to partnering with the city. As opposed to us paying, it was about twelve hundred bucks a month, does that sound right? Twelve, about twelve hundred bucks a month for us to get rid of and all that cardboard. The school took that stream on and they actually have increased their fundraising efforts. We did participate with them and rebuilt them new steps to get up into the trailer. I know that they've been working on kind of streamlining, stream, streamlining, lining, sorry. Having two trailers and getting one switched out and when one's gone, they can use the other one. They also had a lot of issues last year with volunteer efforts through the pandemic. And I actually spoke to their coordinator today just to get updates on where they're at. Earlier, or late last month, they submitted a grant application to Eagle. I think it's the Recycling Infrastructure Grant. And their intention is to actually create a more substantial facility and put it out in front of the school along Twelfth Street, kind of like at the bottom of the hill. For a couple of different reasons. One, it makes that interaction with the public going behind the school and the children and so forth a little bit safer. But it also creates more visual and they're hoping that'll, that'll reduce the abuse. We've been, we've noticed over the past probably month and a half that the site's been a lot better. They've been able to get their volunteer efforts. It seems like the, the public that's dropping off cardboard is doing a much more responsible job. And those are their words from earlier today. So I asked them, you know, what would happen if, if there was a discontinuation of our partnership? They said that they would still keep going, they would still be trying to do those improvements because it's, it's an important part of the school. As far as the city side of it, we really haven't had any, any major issues. There's been a few times where we found large items of stuff outside, but, but it's actually quite a bit less than what we had when we had it over in the industrial park. Before we get into, you know, what options are available and I want Matt to just kind of explain what's happening worldwide, actually nationally in the recycling area. Because recycling has become quite a bit more expensive than it was just a few years ago. And so I kind of wanted to set the stage for that. And then whatever council wants to talk about, we've, I think we've done enough to be able to handle, you know, discuss some various options and some pros and cons and so forth. The down button advances it.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Council, for, for making a little bit of time. I'll try to be quick so I don't take a lot of your time tonight. As we've discussed in the past, the, the recycling industry has shifted. And if you look at just the last five years to ten years, you've seen a lot of change. One of the most important ones, and those of you who've been on council for a while have heard this before, is really what they call lightweighting in the industry. So in two thousand and fifteen and beyond, manufacturers worked very hard to reduce the content of material in their packaging. So the water bottles today is a great example of this, right? The water bottles are very flimsy, they don't actually stand on their own. It takes, in two thousand and fifteen, it was about forty-eight thousand water bottles to make a ton of material. And in today's world, it takes about ninety-two thousand water bottles to make a ton of material. So you have to collect twice as much material to equal the same weight. So that means the processors have to push through more items in order to equal the same value stream that they were putting out before. China Sword came about in two thousand and eighteen. And China Sword was a restriction from China on recycling exports out of our country. China took the largest percentage of our exports, including our fiber stream. And so what that did was crash the market when they did their things and made recycling values much lower than they'd ever been traditionally, which made the processors increase what they called a tipping fee or a processing cost. So overnight, it went from basically zero dollars to up to two hundred dollars in certain markets. In our market, it leveled out about seventy dollars a ton in terms of processing costs. And that's something that the city has to budget for and, and take on. One of the things that we saw in the last three years beyond that China Sword was the effects of COVID. And what COVID did was really push up, you know, what was happening at the curb. So the volumes went away from your downtowns, your schools, your businesses, and went directly to the curb, to the residents. Tons of Amazon and online shopping occurred. And that trend was really entrenched in the public in the last year. That there's nothing that I can't get online. And people who had been resistant to that in the past have really embraced that now. So you're seeing all demographics seeing a lot more materials coming to their house, which means there's more material coming out that way than before. So in the fiber stream, like as an MCC has, you know, they were not seeing as much material originally because business was self-satisfying in their own cardboard dumpsters and things of that nature. MCC also had a cardboard route that went through River Street prior to COVID. And so that material was getting collected in a different way. And now all of that material, instead of being all the individual boxes of shoes being dealt with by the shoe store, now all of those same scales are happening at each house. So those materials are coming out to MCC that way versus the way they were originally coming. So you're seeing a dramatic shift in the commodities and the values. Now, those are starting to rebound, but here's just a basic look. And this was a Q one seventeen slide and it's shifted back up at this point a little bit. But this runs you eighteen through second quarter of two thousand and twenty. And you're seeing those changes in the commodity values, which makes the processing, you know, not see the value stream on the backside, which goes to that increase in rate. Those values are starting to rebound. But what that really did, and this is the important slide of the night, is it changed municipal programs across the country. Some municipal programs had to increase their rates because of those processing fees. Some municipals changed their services directly. Some municipalities changed the material list on what they would take. Some municipalities canceled the program altogether. And some municipalities sent their recycling to incinerators instead of processors because the cost was lower. And they used the beneficial reuse of an incinerator to create energy, to create power and light, versus pushing it through a recycling center. So these are just kind of some of the trends that you're seeing across the United States today. The last trend that I want to talk about real briefly is just industry staffing. Republic Services in the transportation sector is no different than everyone else in today's world. We're experiencing dramatic shifts in staffing. In fact, I heard one industry analysis on CNBC put out that there was over two hundred thousand truck driving positions in the United States today that are unfilled. And that's why we're having a lot of problems, not only in the automotive sectors, but in other manufacturing sectors, getting parts to these manufacturers in order to build the things that they need to build. And we're experiencing that problem as well. What that industry shortage does is, again, increase costs. It drives those retention values up, it drives the new hire values up. If you drive by any CDL company right now, any fleet company, you'll see a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus in front of their parking lot on a big sign. It's unprecedented for us to have those kind of sign-on bonuses. But that's what we need to do to ensure that the people come in the door and work for us in today's market compared to somebody else. There's actually a market shift right now where they're importing people from foreign countries to drive CDL trucks in the United States because we can't find enough workers in the U.S. to drive the trucks. It's the first time I've ever seen something like that in my lifetime. And, you know, it's something that I think is unique enough to bring up here tonight. So those things are kind of just a general quick recap. I don't want to take a ton of time, but any of you that want to, you know, go through that information in more detail, you have my card, I'd be more than happy to have a private meeting with you and go through that and, and spend, you know, the hour and a half that this deck normally takes and go through all that information. As Jeff said, we've taken some time based on your request. And we've gone through the information to decide what other program alternatives are available to you. And some of those have come before council before and been voted down. And some of those are based on, on various reasons, and Jeff can talk to those as well. But the three options that we looked at was how do we help improve what's going on at MCC? And MCC is doing a good job of looking at that with the Eagle Grants. The Republic City side of that program, the co-mingle dumpster, has not been the issue. Everything that we've seen in the news and everything that we've seen on site is really related around the fiber trailers. And the fiber trailers are, you know, in that partnership with PCA. And it's something that's really outside of our control. You know, the city and the DPW team has helped to, you know, relieve some of that burden during their volunteer shortages. But it's not something that the city can do long-term, that's really a responsibility of MCC. So that leads us back to the conversation of if we don't do it at MCC, the alternative would be to bring it back into a city-controlled environment. So that would be an immediate increase in cost of ten to fifteen thousand dollars to process that cardboard. Packaging Corporation of America receives those trailers through their school program. But they don't allow private contractors like us to bring them material in our style trucks. They have to go to a processing facility. It has to be bailed and then put on a truckload and then brought to a facility like PCA or another processing facility that a mill is what we call those in the industry. So that's where that additional cost comes, is the transportation of that cardboard and that schedule to do that. Now, there's some things that we can change in that program, if you were to see that. But looking at the change in the behavior at MCC, you know, Jeff and Ed and myself can't see a good reason to recommend that at this point in time. Unless there's something that you guys want to further discuss on that. The alternative would be curbside recycling. Now, this board knows that curbside was here in the town before, but it was a subscription-based program. And there was less than a hundred residents that had signed up for that. And at a hundred residents, it was nonfeasible to run that truck through the town, the entire town, pick up that few of homes. The, the fee that they paid for that service didn't, you know, cover the cost of what was being offered to them. And so in July of two thousand and twenty, we discontinued that in the last contract reservation. Now, you could do a curbside program back to all the residents. But the cost to that would be required to go on the utility bill for all. So it's not a subscription-style program that's available for recycling, it's a, everyone participates. And if as a resident, you decide you don't want to, you don't have to, but that cost would still be on your solid waste utility bill. And so that's something that hasn't had much favor with the council in the past. But it's something that we can explore and talk about, the cost of that, if you want to look through that again. And so with that, I'll, I'll pause for a moment and see if you have any questions and let Jeff come up and answer those as well.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Is MCC still picking up the cardboard on River Street?
They are not.
Are they gonna start picking it up again or no?
I do not know the answer to that, but to my knowledge, no.
I don't believe the ordinance allows, allows cardboard to be put out on River Street. So when we went to the, to the curbside carts and then we, you know, we revised the, the refuse ordinance, that also included the downtown area utilizing the corrals that were built. And it, and it prohibits putting trash receptacles or any type of material out on the curb. And that, that was really what drove the entire discussion, was the DDA wanted to try to clean up that appearance.
Now, what we did do in that process is PCA, for about a month and a half, set up a time schedule where they parked on each block and moved down ten or fifteen businesses at a time so that businesses could bring that material out. What they found was they couldn't find a convenient time for their volunteers that coincided with the businesses' needs.
So MCC uses that money for their fundraisers and, and school trips and stuff. Can't we figure out a way to get another trailer to like MHS?
They have one.
The same thing?
They already have one, they've had one.
They have.
Same, same amount of time as Manistee Catholic.
Packaging Corporation of America, obviously, they, they purchase recycled cardboard. And they use it in their process to make new boxes or new corrugated medium. They have a, I believe it's seven semi-trailers that they have a school program and they assign those semi-trailers to various schools. I think they're mostly in Manistee County. But when we've had conversations with them, they are not interested in, in say, giving the city of Manistee one of those trailers to use. We explored that. And the money that they pay the schools is a loss for them. It is just a way to donate money and put money back into the schools. So there, there's no economic benefit to them. So we don't have that option.
Okay. Does anybody use the trailer at the high school? I mean, I don't understand why.
Yeah, I do, I do.
Okay. Well, I don't understand why the other trailers are overflowing then, if there's trailers.
Because Emmy just, to be honest, MHS doesn't want to publicize the school. All the people that go to MHS, the parents all know about this, about the paper recycling. But they don't want it any bigger than it already is.
Well, then, we need to put a sign on there that says, "Call MHA or MCC when it's full", instead of calling me and screaming at me that the trailer's full, I mean.
You notice they back the trailer up to the school.
Right.
No, I noticed that I get calls all the time. It's full and they want me to do something.
I mean, I'm asking, they're up to the building. Oh, you gotta, people don't want to crawl out and go up. And the steps are really bad because there's no handles.
The steps aren't bad for, for senior citizens. I can tell you, if you've got one armful full of cardboard and you're trying to hang on to the railing, you really, you really needed the two hands for the cardboard, otherwise you're making multiple trips. I, I've heard numerous complaints from seniors about the, the steps to the trailer.
Yeah, and I think that the, the grant that they applied for, I think that is intended to make the, the drop-off easier. You don't have to get elevated to be able to do that. They're talking about putting in a, you know, an actual building where people can drop their stuff off. And so they're looking at improvements. It's also important to remember that the recycling program that the city of Manistee has is for residential use only. This doesn't, this isn't open and it isn't paid for by the, by the businesses. So when we had the site over in the industrial park and even when it was in the DPW parking lot, that was for residential use. And I think when we made the transfer, we were about, we were using six eight-yard dumpsters at a time. And well, those were being emptied three times a week. And then every time there's cardboard outside of them, their drivers would snap a photo. They would estimate, or I don't know how you calculate it, but they would.
Reload the containers, yeah.
Is that what you would do, reload them? So we were paying overages consistently with that. Keep in mind, MCC is open to anybody. So people from Philer Township, people from Stronach, people from Manistee Township, as well as the city in Manistee are bringing stuff. And then certainly all the families of the students there and, and alumni, you know, bring their materials to support it. So their draw and their volume is much, much greater than what we were handling before.
You know, the, the other notable thing for those who are new to the council is, you know, within the last three years, Manistee Township also stopped their drop-off facility. And so that influxed material into our program here within the city. And Philer Township influxes material within to our program in the city as well. There's really no way to stop that shy of having a site monitor, card people, or have specific hours where you unlock and lock that facility. And even that wouldn't control it, it's, I think.
Don't leave it at the gate.
Believe it at the gate. Since the media exposure, you know, two months ago now, the behavior of the residents have improved. And I think that that's unfortunately part of the time that we live in today, that people believe, you know, when they pull up to a site like this and they have material, well, I'm gonna make this material be gone if that means I have to leave it alongside of it. That's someone else's problem, that's not my problem. And I think that the media painted a picture that they helped understand that this is volunteers that are handling that. And if you do this, what you're doing is you're just compounding an issue that's already there with. And I know that doesn't help with the phone calls, Miss Sullivan, when you get them on the phone. But I think that the residents have to understand that this is not a hundred percent a city-controlled program. The city only controls that co-mingled container and the scheduling for it. Everything else is done through the school partnership.
I have a question on cost. You said the cost to do curbside would be on our, you know, our water bills, basically our utility bill. What is that, would that cost go out to everybody that gets a water bill or just to people who are recycling?
We, we had some very brief conversations. Matt was working on what that program would cost, how much it would cost if, you know, as a total, if it was for every resident. And so we haven't made any decisions, this was just discussion in a meeting. But what we were suggesting is that if you created an opt-out option in the community, then, and when I say opt-out, you know, the mayor doesn't want a cart and doesn't want to participate, so then you don't want to pay for it. But Mr. Spansky does. If we get too many people opting out, then it's gonna drive that cost up substantially. And so the discussions that we were having is if we went to a curbside, you can opt out, but the rates are still gonna be the same. We would have to adjust the refuse schedule so that what you're paying for garbage and, and recycling is all wrapped into one, or could be a mileage increase to cover those expenses. But opting out doesn't mean it, it's gonna save you any money back.
I do have a question and it's probably something that maybe Ed Skrup can, can answer at some point. How many people opt out of trash pickup at their houses? Remember when we had the big discussion, we, we went to the, the large-sized totes and, and bags? I happen to know that there are people that are bypassing the system by just taking their trash to a city, yes, a city dump site. So I'm just curious, how many are not paying for that? Maybe it would give us some clue as to how many people would also opt out of curbside. It's just a suggestion, it just would give us another set of data to look at. Yeah, I didn't think you would have the numbers, but I thought it would be something that we could study.
I don't think the numbers are, are too much more or, or under than what we had before. But I will tell you that there was, that abuse is happening today, you're absolutely correct. I've seen it often, but it's always been happening. And, you know, personally, if you're paying for a tote and you're leaving for the weekend and you throw it in the dumpster, there's no harm, no foul because the fees are covered and, and the city's being whole. But if you opted out and that's how you're dealing with it, that's wrong.
I bet.
That's wrong, because you put the burden on the rest of the taxpayers. I will say that we ordered, you know, we ordered, made a large order of the bags. And I don't, we're just getting close to halfway through what we had ordered. So, you know, the usage is, is there, people are buying them, people are using those, but.
How much are we charging for the bags?
I believe they're two fifty a piece.
Two fifty a piece.
And they're, where are we getting them from? Is it from the city or from the hardware stores?
We ordered the bags from a company that makes.
Right, but where, where are the residents getting them from?
Oh, we have them at, they're available at City Hall, they're available at.
War Hardware.
War Hardware, Family Fair, maybe Save-A-Lot too.
And they're all being charged as two fifty, right? Because I was hearing that they.
No, they have, they have an up, there's an up charge. If you buy them at, if you buy them at War Hardware, there's a small up charge to cover their expense. A dollar, a dollar more for a bag of twenty.
Okay, because that's what I was hearing and I don't think.
Yeah, but it's a, but it's a dollar.
That's a dime a bag.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, that's their, their markup. And I will tell you, War Hardware loses money because most people come in and put their credit card on and they pay five percent. So theoretically, they're not making any, they're actually losing on the overall. So, but that's the idea, just a handling fee for those other places.
And the reason why we did that opt-out, or the reason why council agreed to do that opt-out was, was to have a less impact on the, on the fixed income residents.
Or people that recycle and don't have a lot of garbage.
Sure.
You have kind of like an estimate on like how much it would be on everybody's water bill for the recycling?
Somewhere between six and eight dollars, depending on how you structured the program and what the frequency of the program would be.
So the last three cities I lived in, recycling and garbage collection was all combined. You had, you had a blue container and a brown container. And you put the blue container out on Tuesdays, the brown container went out on Wednesday. And it was all one bill. And at that time, you know, you had mixed recycling in your, in your recycling container. And they sorted it out, although you still had their criteria of what went in there.
And there's some ways to lower that, there's grants that are available that can do procurement of containers. There's some restrictions that come with that. I was part of another community that just did that. And the restriction in that is everyone gets a container, you don't have the option to opt out, you will have a container. That's part of that grant. So if you choose not to use it, that's fine, but that container lives with your house. And that's the requirement of the city grant.
What size is the container?
So it could either be a sixty-five or a ninety-six, depending on the program and how you specify the grant.
And whether you're gonna pick up twice a month or just once a month, you know, that would impact the size of the container.
So there's some variables if council wants to look at that again, we're more than happy to put that together. But the last three times that we put that in front of council, there wasn't enough favor to move it forward. And I'm not saying that there is or isn't today, that's just historically how the answer's been.
Well, I don't think we ever talked about it being either twice a month or once a month. So I would be interested in seeing some numbers to support that, to help bring the cost down. Because I know a lot of people would take them a month to fill a sixty-four.
So what we see in most communities is there's a portion of population, and this is even true in the ninety-six gallon trash container, there's a portion of population that don't fill that weekly or bi-weekly, and they place that out infrequently. And then there's that portion of your population that needs that bi-weekly service versus once a month. The alternative is to, if you went to a monthly service, would be to let that resident subsidize that need by renting an additional car or paying for an additional service.
Actually, if you went to, if you went to curbside pickup, the, the curbside, you're able to put in your plastics, your metal and your paper cardboard. But MCC's not gonna end their program. So if you're filling up your container with cardboard every month and want to take it to MCC, that's still available to you.
Well, if we start there, we're gonna be taking money away from the kids in MCC, right?
Right, potentially.
We start doing it, we're gonna be taking money out of their pockets that they're using for drinks.
Yep.
I'm not in favor of that.
Well, not necessarily, because Philer and Stronach and everybody else uses it too, so.
There'll be a reduction.
Yeah, some, some people would continue to recycle their paper through MCC. But there is some that would just, for convenience sake, just throw it all in the dumpster.
The benefit of curbside remains, you have the ability to educate the resident at the curb. So if that resident is misbehaving and they're placing the wrong materials within the container, you have the ability to have one-on-one conversations. When something happens at MCC.
Or any collection site.
Or any drop-off site, you don't have the ability to have that conversation.
So would the businesses on River Street get a, be in that recycling then too, since they're on the water?
They can't put a container out on the street.
Okay, so then they could take their stuff to MCC and that would offset people using their, because that's a lot of cardboard up and down there. So it would kind of balance each other out, okay.
But you used to have recycling containers for businesses as well, right? And you still have them at some location, don't you?
No, the curbside recycling ninety-six gallon tote in the core city went away. There are still businesses that have cardboard.
Cardboard, yeah, the containers.
Absolutely, yep. Yep, businesses that produce a lot of cardboard have their own cardboard containers as well.
Unfortunately, the reason why we went to that whole program with the corrals downtown is that the majority of them don't have space to do their own dumpsters, so.
What is the cost, can I ask this question? What is the cost to the? What is the cost to the business owners downtown? How has that changed on their bills, what they were paying for trash pickup and using the corrals now? Hmm, I don't know.
I think it's, I think some have benefited and some have seen an increase.
Increase, so.
Because it's classified differently than it was before. Now it's tiered by the type of business and the type of occupancy. Where before, wasn't it just, just the large, small?
Yeah, it used to be the same as the residential, a different number of pickups and stuff. And we switched it over, the businesses have classified it a little bit differently, so the, the ways have changed somewhat. But that, that, we spent months working that system off, so some probably had an increase and some of it had a decrease as a matter of fact.
Okay.
Generally, it's still cheaper to use the corrals than to have your own dumpster. But some of them have such high volume, it's a convenience, and they will, if they've got space, they'll opt to have their own dumpster just so they don't have to keep transporting it up to the corrals. And it's, I don't want to jinx it, but we, we've been doing really well with the corrals, too. I, I think we've only had to go up and, and actually clean them a couple of times when we've had reports. So the downtown has been very, very responsible with that program.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I have just one more. Matt, the last time we talked, I had mentioned about glass recycling and about a glass recycling machine. Have you had a chance to look at that and see if any of your other, you know, cohorts in the business have been just basically turning glass into sand?
Right. There's not any traditional haulers that are currently deploying that technology. And all the materials recovery facility in our region are using one of two glass processors. One's in Toledo, one's in Detroit, as we talked about once before, or one's in Toledo, one's in Chicago. So the transportation of glass is, is very heavy, so it's got a high cost to it. And so that's some of the burden. In our region, the glass that does get turned in for recycling is actually crushed and used as road-based in the landfill. So it, it actually ends up in the landfill. So when we discussed, you know, discontinuing that, for the most part, there are still lots of residents that put glass in the commingled container. Then, and that still goes to the processing center and it still gets crushed and used as road base.
And you still have to pay for that.
You still have to pay seventy dollars a ton to have that happen. In good faith, I could not see the reason to promote glass within these communities for it just to ultimately end up in the landfill. Because what happens with road base in the landfill as a cell expands is that road base disc gets scooped up into the cell. So it actually gets landfilled at the end of the day. So you're paying three times what we'd pay for a resident to just throw that in the trash can and put it in the recycle can. And personally, I don't find that, it's a misleader to me, and so I'd rather be honest about that than to say, yes, you're recycling glass. Where in reality, it's, it's a beneficial reuse, perhaps, but ultimately, it's still ending up in that facility where it ends up in the hole in the ground for twice the cost. So at this point in time.
But it takes up a whole lot less room in your landfill, though, right? And doesn't that have a cost associated with it?
You know, yes and no. The, the glass that comes in the landfill in the trash container versus the glass that comes to landfill in the recycling. If you haven't ever been to one of the open houses at the landfill, we didn't do one last year because of COVID. I'm not sure if we're going to do one yet this year, but there's great big, large compacters that run over all that trash that decrease that airspace. And so anything that's breakable gets crushed and pulverized within the cell itself. So there's really no space difference. It's really, it's all about, you know, the technology needed to sort that glass out of good material to then ultimately have it end up in the same place in our region doesn't make sense to me. Now, if that processor ever decided they were going to send that to Chicago or Detroit, I would love to ring that bell very loudly, but at this point in time, they haven't. And I, I check that about every two months. But to answer your specific question, no one's using that pulverizing technology. Luddington's kind of danced with it through, why can't I think of the name of her organization now down in Luddington? The, the recycle girl down there? Anyways, they've explored it, but they can't seem to find a gravel or sand yard that's willing to partner with them to do it. And so there's some risk to the gravel and sand yard if the material's not to the right consistency. It doesn't meet DOT specs, and then you get a whole nother risk factor into it. Aaron, you're so quiet tonight.
I'm listening.
Well, thank you. I think we still need to explore these a little more deeply, so hopefully you can come back with some more numbers. We love numbers, of course, you know, so.
So what specific numbers would you like, Ms. Beaton?
Well, I think if these numbers are solid, it would cost six to eight dollars per resident that has a water bill if it was at your house. But you still haven't explained how that would equate to whether it's one month pickup, two, twice a month.
We could come back with a few of those options for curbside and with some real numbers to them.
One of the problems that, in the past, though, some of the residents wouldn't have room for another tote.
I have that problem, but I think we have to look at everything, so.
Well, thank you very much for your time tonight. I appreciate you giving me the guys tonight. And if there's anything you ever need, you've got my card, you've got my number, please feel free.
Okay.
Always available.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a construction update. Department of Public Works Director Jeff McCula and Engineer of Record Sean Middleton.
What happened to the projector? Shut down.
I think Matt shut it off. Can you shut the projector off?
If we can't get the PowerPoint up, Sean will walk in front of you with.
Take this position so I'm not always the one.
Pictures.
Oh, why not?
I don't like everybody staring at me.
Why not? I'm not sure how you can do that.
I'm always like.
You might have to bribe somebody into it.
Like, I'm making sure my eyes are always open, watching.
We can put it on that. Still smiling, but turn around.
Sure.
Put it on that wall over there.
Yeah.
And we stare at those guys.
My boy.
So we just wanted to give a council update. We've got nearly twenty-five million dollars in construction that is either underway or is getting very close to beginning. The projects that are current right now, just going around, starting clockwise with the, the stonework at the, at First Street Beach. If you drive down there, sometimes it's a little hard to see if you're just on First Street, but all the work to the east of the boat lawn tramp, all the stonework is completed. They poured half of this concrete sidewalk today, and the second half is formed and we board.
Friday.
Friday. So the last thing that'll need to happen there before we can open it up to the public is the steel railing along the water side of it. But I believe that it's a, beyond the protection that, that the project has, has provided, I think the end result is going to be well-received by the public. And then they're also working on the stonework to the west of the boat lawn tramp. At the top of the page is the Jackson Van Buren. It's actually, we're installing new water main in that project and reconstructing the roads and then adding some storm sewer. To me, that's a pretty interesting process. The state of Michigan requires the water department to have a, a general plan created every five years and updated. And many years ago, when that plan was updated, it was the first time that we were able to put the entire water system in a computer model and simulate what would happen when there were fire flow conditions, because that's the largest demand on the system. And the fire department was brought in and said, well, I'm worried about a fire condition downtown. And so in a future, you know, sewer separation project, we were able to upgrade that water main. But I think it was when Councilman Bachman was the Public Safety Director, he pointed out that Jackson Van Buren had some of the worst water supply in the city. It's not bad, it's just the volume of water was some of the lowest in the entire city. But it had the highest fire load sitting right in that neighborhood with a lumberyard. And so I don't remember how many years ago that was, but we've had this on the radar screen for, I want to say, six, seven years. And now it's under construction. If you ever drove down Jackson Street, the pavement was very irregular and it was crazy. Well, we're starting to find out why. There are, there's lots of sawdust, wood, stumps, trees. Have you found an actual tree yet?
I haven't found any trees.
But there's a lot of debris that was, was put in, and, and some of it's six feet deep, four to six feet deep. So we're finding some real, real nasty stuff in that street. So when that gets done, it'll be a huge upgrade.
Ken, just a quick question.
Sure.
Where, where are the people parking for vehicles?
So most of the residents in that project have off-street parking, and the contractor has, has taken some of the old cinder base that the road was built on before, and they've made a one-lane path down all the streets. So people are still able to get back in at the end of the day.
Okay.
That'll change a little bit when some of the concrete work is happening and, and obviously the paving, but residents have been pretty, pretty decent out there.
Yeah, and some are parked on Monroe Street and even in the chiropractors, each chiropractor parking lots.
Okay, good.
The next square is all the roofing improvements, and we'll go into these in detail. And then the two projects, the rural development projects, the conveyance and the, the new headworks at the treatment plant. And then A Street, which is actually under the same con, excuse me, contract as Jackson Van Buren, but it didn't have any ductile iron. It just had storm sewer upgrades. So the contractor was able to get in on that project and probably the fastest reconstruction of road that I've ever seen in my career. And the residents seem extremely pleased with that project. Some other projects that are still going on that were started well over a year ago is the Rural Development One Contract A, which is over two point three million dollars, and that's relining the sewers. If you look at the picture on the, pictures on the right, it's just incredible what those hundred-year-old sewers looked like prior and then what they look like with the new lining. Not only have we extended the life of those pipelines by at least another fifty years, but we've reduced a lot of inflow and infiltration from groundwater and old taps. And we've been able to see positive effects of that down at the treatment plant during wet weather flows. We did come under budget on this project, and Rural Development said spend it or give it back. So we actually wrote a change order. I believe city council approved that, and we added a couple more segments to the project. To me, one of the, the most important one was there's a sewer line, a major sewer line, that actually goes from Sixth Avenue underneath Century Terrace down to the river. It is below that building. And then it runs along the river to the pump station. And so that's freaked me out. If that ever failed, I have no idea what we would have been able to do to repair that. But now it has been relined, and we've got a lot of comfort in those. The Rural Development Phase Two Contract A is the conveyance. That project should have started back in May, June. It had, it could not because of the delivery of materials initially. But the more significant thing is the pipeline has to travel underneath the railroad tracks before it can get to the treatment plant. We permitted, are there roofers up there or something?
I think it is the roofers. The gargoyle down the corner.
They're listening into their portion of the, of the presentation. The, the conveyance underneath the railroad tracks, we permitted that with CSX. We paid them a lot of money for the right to be able to pass underneath those tracks. And then when we got that all set, then the local operator that actually leases the tracks forced us to go through a whole process of theirs. So we had to go through Genesee in Wyoming and kind of repeat all that, so it's created a delay. The company that's going to put that pipe, microtunnel that pipe underneath the tracks, will be on-site tomorrow. They're going to prep all the, the bore pit and the receiving pit and get everything lined up. And they should be able to begin pushing the pipe underneath the tracks on Monday. That's a forty-eight inch pipeline, and they're boring it a hundred foot. Because of the railroad, once they start moving that pipe, they cannot stop. They cannot, they have to keep going until it's done. So we're praying that that goes well. Once that pipeline is in place, then the conveyance project will start, will take that out to Seventh and High Street, and then it'll go down Seventh Street for two blocks, turn on Ramstil, and connect to the CSO eighteen or the diversion chamber that's at Fifth and Ramstil.
It'll go right down the middle of the road, I mean, right below the road surface?
Um, it will not. It is a deep pipeline. It is a very large pipeline. There are, there are, there's a sanitary sewer that already exists that's up higher. There's a water main that exists that's up higher. There's storm sewer that exists that is massive. And there's, on Ramstil Street, there's actually a brine line that serves the Morton Plant. So the engineers had to kind of thread a needle, and we're actually having to pull out the sewer, pull out the water, set this down, this new pipeline down in the ground, and we're going to connect all the houses back to it and eliminate the, the previous sewer, and then we will provide a new water main for that.
It's in, it's not in the roadway, it's in the.
It's in the roadway, but it, but it is.
But you're carrying a road up and going up.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be.
It's not in the roadway, but it's in the roadway.
So it'll be full reconstruction when that's done. They are hoping to get down Seventh Street before the end of the year. And I don't think there's any way we're going to open up Ramstil this year. And there's a, there's a slight possibility that we may not even get gravel or get asphalt back on it. We'll just have to see how, how that process goes down the, those two blocks.
I heard crushed glass works really well in the roadway.
I will also mention that we did hold a neighborhood meeting for that. We sent out a hundred and thirty invitations to everybody that lives on that project or would be impacted. And we had only one gentleman that came. But he received a lot of special attention and a lot of good information, and we made him the neighborhood captain. Lucas normally goes door-to-door and speaks with people, and their inspectors are out there every day, so it's not a huge issue. We'll get through that, but, but we reached out and it just wasn't well-accepted, so.
It was a really nice day.
It was beautiful out. Contract B on Phase Two is the Clean Water Recovery Facility. That's actually something that will be coming back to you. I'd like to present a resolution changing it from the wastewater treatment plant. The way that that new facility will function is, is a lot different, and it's really returning clean water back into the environment. We're going to show some pictures, but it's really hard to digest everything that's going on down there. Off to the left, you see kind of the, the gray boxes. That's about two million dollars of steel and concrete. It's very deep in the ground. How, what is the bottom? Forty-two feet below the surface. The Manistee Lake level's about five or six foot below the surface. So we've got fifty-foot wells that have been running since May, drawing out all the groundwater. And then there's local wells at the bottom of the excavation while they were pouring all that. It's been a challenge, but it's coming up out of the ground now. I don't think anybody will ever appreciate all the work and effort and what's down below the ground. Off to the right, they don't really stand out in this picture. If you went there today, it's amazing how, like, how long ago was this picture taken?
Three weeks ago.
So today, the, the, where the, where you see the sand and kind of the tracks that go through it, that'll be. that'll be the site where the three, one point with a.
Two million gallons.
Two million gallon tanks will be constructed. They've got almost two of the bases just about prepared. They plan on pouring all three of the foundations and the base of those in three consecutive days. I think it's over 600 yards of concrete.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred yards of concrete?
Yeah, total 1200.
It's a lot of concrete. And then the tanks themselves are steel going up above it. That's just another perspective. We talked about the riverbank. Again, that project is going really well. We didn't meet the, our deadline of opening up the Riverwalk before the Fourth of July. That was primarily due to the, just the delays in getting the federal permits. And then we really haven't pressed the schedule beyond that because we expected them to finish probably in October and, but there will still be some opportunities for people to enjoy that yet this year. One thing I didn't mention is between the new sidewalk and the, the original portion of the Riverwalk that was undamaged, we've got a connection piece that's new. It's on new pile. If you drive by the boat launch, you can see it's on green pile. But that is constructed very similar to the original Riverwalk, except that we upgraded and we put the composite decking on that. We thought that was a good, good example of, I don't know, it's about 100-foot, 110-feet for the community to see and even for council to see what the composite decking looks like. Does it get slippery when it's wet? You know, how well does it, how easy is it to maintain?
Did you say you laid 110-feet of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So that'll be a good example, but I think that, that's really what the future of our Riverwalk should go to.
Are the rails on that area, are they going to be metal or are they going to be wood like they were before?
On the, on the composite deck section, they will be the same style as what we had. Along the concrete sidewalk, we're putting in metal rails just on the water side.
Okay.
Those are various pictures of the project. You can see the green piles in the center. Top picture, you can see some of the decking in the picture below that. The retaining wall for the outlook parking has been completely rebuilt. They've got a little bit more to do on the cap of it and then reinstall the fencing, but that's turned out better. We're much more comfortable because it's got a, a better base underneath that wall. But we've also, we've also buried a couple courses of the block and we've got a more gent, gent, gentler slope and then we've got a slope that's protected at the toe of it. So we're pretty confident that, that that'll be a very long-term fix.
Is there sheet pile behind it, Jeff?
There's sheet pile, the contractor installed sheet pile to retain the roadway and the parking. Do they, do you know if they left that in there? So that's pulled out, but it prevented them from having to cut out the asphalt and the curbing. Street projects, really we've talked about that, A Street and Jackson Van Buren. Those two projects totaled 1.2 million. We were about $80,000, $90,000 under budget with the low bidder on that project. We probably will use some of that money to correct some of the sawdust and, and base issues that are outside of what the contractors are responsible for, but I think we're in good shape there.
Jeff, just real quick, when, when you take out all of that, are you going to try to level Van Buren Street a little bit? Cause right now it seems like it goes a roller coaster and there's a real high point. And when you look at it, it doesn't look like it needs to be there. I was just curious if, if there was going to be some gradual leveling out of that street from side to side.
I find out, I think it's two and a half feet. We're dropping the profile two and a half feet to meet standards. There's certain standards we have to meet anyway, so that will be chopping that out.
Jackson had some pretty severe, so that's all going to be blended. And the trick is when you do that, you can make the street profile very easily, but we're at daylight and hits the driveways. So the engineers have been pretty creative and, but we didn't, I don't think we had obtained any grading easements for that. We do three, okay. This is A Street. Honestly, the only issue we had was that lower right, just, I didn't know you had this in there. But that lower right picture, we have a motorcycle parked on the fresh asphalt. There's holes in it. We're gonna, I'm going to have my staff do the repairs. But we worked with Chief Glass' staff to just educate the resident and it's now up on the sidewalk, so. I'll take a break and let Sean talk about roofs.
Jeff gets to do all the fun ones. Just to back up to the riverbank, there's another question you'll probably hear is what's going on with all the exposed sand? There is dune, native dune grass is proposed to be put in there. It's typically planted fall or spring. But getting the dune grass is very difficult at that quantity. So I don't know if they've got actual dates set. So the contractor's working real close with its supplier to get the dune grass in. Hopefully we'll see it this fall. If not, we'll see it in the spring. But there's a lot of exposed land out there that's, you know, subject to winds and things. We're, we know it's important to get that back in. With the roofs, I guess the main thing is, you know, we've done asset management on streets. We've done asset, asset management really in our water and sewer to some level. We have started to do asset management to some extent with the, the buildings. It's a little more of a dial-down approach to it. But we're looking at all the buildings and one of the things that came out during that process was we need to address the roofs before they get too bad and too expensive to fix. The city's got, we've got a handful of roofs we're doing. There are basically two types. There's a lot of flat roofs that require a membrane to go on them. We use membranes and coatings that go on them to the flat roofs. Then we have pitched roofs that are going to be shingles. The flat roofs are the wastewater facility, the DDA restroom downtown, the bridge house, and then the water, the water pump houses. Those are all flat roofs that are, been basically are complete. We've got punchless items to do on those. We're working through a lot of issues. I can tell you, some of these big projects seem to be going smoother than the little ones. Working on these roof projects have been a challenge. As a matter of fact, the new manager's office experienced some leaks just before he came in. That was a little nerve-wracking to say the least. So we're, we're working through those. They're going to be pulling these windows out and putting them back in. The, the flashing on the windows wasn't done quite right, so we're going to get that fixed. So there's a lot of little items that are getting cleaned up on the flat roofs. The, I can go to the next slide here. These are just some examples of the work. So on the, the left, upper, upper left is the bridge house. So this is kind of during the process. What they do is they take, they strip it all the way back down to the deck. It either goes to the wood substrate or a concrete roof. They pull that off, they check the insulation. If it's wet and saturated, that comes off and they kind of rebuild the section again using, you know, these, these liners. The bottom two pictures are examples of finished products, what that looks like. So that all drains to a drain and then, and then out. It looked great in here, but it took a long, it took a lot of work to get to those points. With regards to the pitched roofs, the Water Works building is next on the list. That'll be a shingled roof. And then we also have the fire hall. Those are still to be done yet this year.
Are they going to have to replace the roof before they put the shingles on at the Water Works?
As part of the bid process, what they do is as they, as they strip it, they'll identify areas and there's some budgetary numbers in there for replacing some of the roofing. So if they find bad areas, they'll replace them. And that applied to these, these roofs as well. This is top of City Hall, just a couple more examples. On the left is kind of in process. On the right is a lot closer to the finished products. This is from above, just looking down at it. They use drones for a lot of this work, as you can imagine. Okay. Marina docks, everybody's aware, we did the work on the Marina docks a couple of years ago. We applied for a grant, a Waterways grant. We found out about a month ago maybe, we received the grant. I think we've brought that to council. We bid the project just recently. Our bids came in at 425,000 and our estimate was right around 417, so it was a little overestimate. But we're very close. Our estimate was based on the last project a couple of years ago. So not too surprised, but, and we got a great company. We haven't worked with them directly, but Great Lakes Docking Materials are a very large, well-known company. They're more than capable of doing this work. This would be kind of small on their, in their world.
We'll have the contract on the agenda for next Tuesday for councils.
Those, there's five docks. They'll be adjustable, just like the other ones. So if the lakes are going down, we can keep moving with them. Keep rolling. So we were kind of hoping when we got through this year, the construction, that we'd look at this map for next year and it would have a lot less blue on it and we could take a little breather. But the, the reality is there's still a lot of work out there. We're going to be doing, the RD projects, you know, on the lower right will continue. Their completion dates are in June and July, I guess it'll be the end of June, I believe it is. So they'll, they'll be going all next year, early next year. Some other projects, there's some small ones out here. We got a relief sewer on First Street that kind of goes back to some of the flooding we've seen up in dunes or in.
Lighthouse.
Lighthouse landings, I'm sorry. You can relate to it. And so we've got a relief sewer that will take a little of the edge off that. So the idea is that that'll pull some water in. There's really big events. That's got to get permitted. I don't know if we'll build it this year, be in the spring. We've talked about Fifth Avenue Beach and the flooding that goes on there. I think we've outlined a little bit, some of our proposals to put a little storm sewer in and some flood protection with walls and ramps. That, that'll be done probably, probably in the spring, maybe this fall if we can get the documents together quick enough. On the north side roadwise, Quincy and Cleveland is on the docket for next year. Been talking about that for a very long time.
Yes.
And we show on their Washington Memorial and that was, it's on the tip for this, for next year with the idea that it was going to be partially funded with MDOT detour monies. And I think Jeff's talked about this. We are still talking with MDOT. They've had some budget problems on their bridge project, so therefore they're not wanting to give up any detour money. So we've kind of looked at other options. We're looking at category F funding. It's another MDOT grant program that includes those two projects. They're two separate applications. It probably won't, would only give us one. So we're kind of crossing our fingers on that. We'll know by the end of the month. We have looked at small urban funding, which would be out to 2024. And so we're looking at options, but both of those funding options push it out another, push it out to 23 or 24. So we have it shown, but there's a big question mark on it.
We are, sir, are you involved in any of the projects that need to be done on the Riverwalk in 2022? I mean, that's coming up. I don't see the Riverwalk on here at all. We've got a lot of discussions about problems on the Riverwalk, so.
So we're, a couple of items. So we had the specific switchback issue that came up. And we inspected it. I prepared a memo, shared it with Jeff and Ed. I think tomorrow morning, Ed's, Jeff's crews are going to go out and we're going to remove some concrete to see if we can look under, underneath that. I'm positive there's a lot of erosion that we're going to have to deal with. We're going to kind of spec that out and determine what the problem is. Probably come up with a short-term solution with some backfill with aggregate or stone. And then we have to work on a long-term solution. So that's, that's very feasible.
Add that to this list?
It probably should be on the list. We got to figure out how to pay, pay for it probably is the next step, but.
Don't want to get it forgotten.
Yeah, it's definitely not forgotten. The other piece of that is I've been requested to do asset management planning for the Riverwalk. We're going to go back and look at some documents we prepared two years ago. We had costs for various things, maintenance items. I'm going to dust those off, look at them and then get a proposal to the city about how we can look at overall big picture asset management for the entire Riverwalk. And that includes operation and maintenance costs that are ongoing. What are the big-ticket items? How do you work it into a long-term plan? How do you fund it? So that's, those are the two immediate things.
I have a question. On the Riverwalk, where the switchback is, when you're talking about removing some of the concrete, I have two questions really. How are you going to safely block that off from people using it? And number two, we're treating the invasive species of Japanese knotweed down there. Will that interfere with their program to treat the Japanese knotweed?
Well, tomorrow will be exploratory to see if what Sean has been able to view, it's got limited access where the issues are. So tomorrow we'll really be removing some sidewalk so that we can see what's happening below it and get a better idea of what the long-term fix is. There's a chance that we could do some, some fixes right away and probably put gravel or even pour concrete back in there and get it back open. But there's also going to be some structural things that we know are going to have to be done at a later date as well. So either way, we will close it, we will close it tomorrow. And then it may remain closed depending on what we find and we'll try to get it back open on a temporary basis if we can.
Okay. But do you know if they're coming back to do another treatment on the Japanese knotweed?
Annually, yes.
Oh, okay. So they're done treating that?
Yep. They will, they'll come back every August.
All right, good.
Wouldn't it help you though to just close it off, Jeff, rather than opening and closing or partially? Cause with that knotweed hanging over there, you know, you're always going to be fighting with that, John.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's the only handicap accessible ramp at that end, so I, I really don't want to close it permanently unless I have to. But if it's a safety issue, we'll definitely have it closed. I also wanted to add on that we, we did a walkthrough with the DDA. I think it's been three weeks ago now. And the majority of those items have already been addressed, I would point out by, with that walkthrough. And then there are some other items that will have to be done, you know, walls that are starting to lean and buckle. That'll be addressed in the, in the asset management. And then there's quite a few trip hazards in the sidewalk down there. So we have our contractor coming into town to do the trip hazards in the city. They're supposed to be here the first week of October and we're going to have them run from, basically from the old chamber to Maple Street Bridge and address all those.
Are you doing sidewalks this year at all? New sidewalks?
Yep. You think we start that in the, late in the fall?
You got a list of where those are that you can share with us someday? I don't know, even today, but just, I'm just curious. I know a couple that are really bad and wonder if they're on the list.
Yeah, we, and I, I can just email you a slide that I put in our annual update to council. But we have, we have taken an approach where we're doing the saw cut, saw cutting first. So we've let that crew get out a season ahead of us. And then the replacements, then the BPW crews have been going, instead of going all over the city trying to get this one, that one, we started on the north side. We cleared the north side. We started west of Maple Street at the river and we're about down to Sixth Street right now.
There was some up by, I own by Jefferson School that were really bad. I just wondered if those were on your list. I guess I was curious about.
Those have been taken care of.
Yep. They've been taken care of already?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the school keeps me very informed.
You think you want my kid to grant send the school?
Well, I, I know the ones on Bryant Street.
Yeah, no, it wasn't Bryant, I guess that I own Street, but if I see it, I'll send you an email.
Okay. Yeah, I could send you the map of where we're at too. So we, we probably, with the same amount of allocated money annually, we were probably eliminating 50 to 80 trip hazards a year. And with the, introducing our crews doing the removal and the replacement, but then more importantly, bringing in the saw cutting, we're probably in the 450 to 600 a year eliminating trip hazards, so. And then honestly, we, if you remember in the budget session, we also budgeted money to start a pilot program where we would find a contractor. A resident could get their sidewalk fixed in front of their house if they paid half that cost. And with everybody so busy, we just haven't implemented that program yet. And when I say busy, I mean specifically contractors are busy, so.
When is the Maple Bridge going to start?
That's a great question.
That was the next one on the list. So we're, we've got final plans coming together literally right now. They're going to get submitted to MDOT. And then they have a letting process that would probably have the bridge let in December or January.
That's the contractor word.
Yeah, so that's when they award the contract. MDOT will award a contract in the middle of winter. They would start the work probably either January or February, work through the winter. And then there's some work that can be done in the spring. So it's real important. We're doing it through the winter because of obviously the shipping and we can't open it, be having the, you know, the bridge open and shut. So it'll be, it'll start January, February, actual work. If everything, if bids come in, okay.
And then does MDOT put some funding for detour? Is that?
So there's two parts to that. There's, this is a very highly funded grant. It's a 95%. The city only pays 5% for the work that's getting done. It's similar to. Um, similar to what their, their other bridge, uh, we're not seeing any funding for detour. Uh, Jeff just pulled up the actual detour route on the screen, what we're looking at, uh, for this project, but right now, we're not receiving any funding for working on that.
Yeah, so, so the, the bridge will be closed, ma- majority of time will be during the winter time, and, um, and the roads, the streets that we're using should be okay for that, that traffic during the off-season. The concerns that we have are, when it flip flops and they close thirty-one, and they force everybody on Maple Street, Memorial Drive would never handle that detour, so we're committed at a minimum to get Memorial Drive rebuilt next year, and if we have to wait because of funding or whatever reason to do Washington Street, I think we can hold off on that a couple of years.
Now, the fifty-five bridge, will that be open?
It'll be open in this December.
Okay, so it won't? Okay, that's what I was worried about, we have in both bridges?
Well, and I, I spoke with the region engineer today, and we're trying to set up some meetings to get through some of these details, but they are also, uh, looking at reconstruction of US thirty-one from Hill Road all the way out to, uh, to Stronach Road in, I think it was twenty-five and twenty-six. So, there, it's a positive thing that, that the state's investing in, in the infrastructure that's local to us, but it's gonna have some major, major impacts to the residents and people trying to travel through the community. So a lot of the stuff that we're doing, as the state gives us these heads up, you know, when we were expecting that the state was gonna participate heavily in this detour upgrade, because they said they would, we plan for capital improvements to match that with local street funds in our, in our tip, but also for water main upgrades in our capital improvement plans. Um, and sometimes, you know, those plans don't, don't come together the way we want, but we're ready for it if we can.
The only one that we didn't cover is the water towers.
That's over. So, yeah, we also have had, uh, both water towers inspected, um, there's work that needs to be done to both of them. We do have some money budgeted in the, in the capital improvement bond, uh, so there are some proceeds, but the inspections returned back additional work beyond that, so we'll be budgeting that in, uh, with capital improvement money out of the water and sewer funds as well. Mostly it's some, a little bit of structural steelwork, it's bringing things up to code in current standards, and then there's some interior painting on Maywood and exterior re-code on the industrial tank.
And one more, 'cause I feel Mark's eyes on me, the fire hall is, is, uh, on schedule for next year. Uh, we're doing the roof this year, but there's actual project for looking at the exterior of the building and some site work, and so the bricks have had some serious issues with some spalling, so, um, we're gonna look at, uh, project for that work next year as well.
Does that include you building that back door?
I, I don't know if I'll get away with doing any work on here without fixing the back door. Clear yes.
Well, I'd say two, Mark.
Depends on who you ask.
You bet.
Well, I know I talked to the chief and he's gonna get a better color on the outside.
Better color?
Yeah, and that pink.
Speaking of color, uh, have we thought about repainting the Maple Street Bridge? Uh, I know I've had somebody suggest that we look at using the new Manistee colors for the Maple Street Bridge, and then adding, uh, LED accent lights across the bottom, so that it, it looks like a bridge at night.
I don't know about the lights, uh, we're definitely, the paint color, there's an engineering side to the paint color, because they like it to be a different color, so you know where the work's done. Um, I don't know if we've actually, we probably typically leave the color to, the selection to the owner. Uh, I'll have to check into if there's anything predetermined or if it's set, um, because if you start using some unique colors, you do run into some cost differences.
But normally, green is not terribly unique.
Right, yeah, that's a good, good point, especially if it's a little darker one. I don't think that's what's probably spec right now, but I'm not sure what Jeff's thinking on the color, but.
I'm not a color guy, but if anybody wants to form a committee and help me select colors, I would welcome that.
There you go, man.
Yeah, and I thought the, the accent lighting was actually a good suggestion.
Yeah.
I never thought about it, but if you think about it, you know, when bridges are lit at night, it really makes a nice,
Yeah, right.
Especially with the Riverwalk, being able to see that.
Yeah, there's a lot of nice, Grand Rapids has got a few bridges like that.
And with LED lighting is not an expense like it used to be, then.
Probably a little late to put in this project since we're going, but, uh, it's something on the road.
So this is a tremendous amount of, a tremendous amount of investment that the community's making in our infrastructure, and we just wanted to bring it forward and kind of give you updates on it. If anybody wants a, a tour of anything at some point, I'm willing to take you and let you see some of the projects, you know, like the plant, you're not gonna be able to get in, in there on your own, but I'd be happy to arrange it for you. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much for, it's great.
I have one last thing while I'm still up here. Uh, Councilman Grabowski asked about the clock downtown.
Yep.
And, uh, we had been in contact with the company that manufactured the clock. We were trying to get a technician to come up here and, and figure out what was wrong and, and do the work on it. Um, they would not send anybody up here last year through COVID, and now they won't respond to our, uh, our communication requests, so we're still working on that.
Pretty expensive, did they give you any hint to that?
Uh, we don't know what's wrong with it, but it's gonna be a couple, couple thousand dollars just to get the technician here.
People asked me, so I thought I'd throw it up at you.
Yeah. Okay.
Do any of the council members have any other topics they quickly want to talk about or ask if we can talk about it at a future time?
Uh, Ed, are we finished with this Reeds Park thing, with the letters that we've gotten and you've responded? Uh, is it, does it affect our, uh, what was that deal?
Um, I reached out to Mr. Hollander regarding that, and he knew that that letter was gonna generate questions, because it's something that is mandated by Mishta, but I think his response letter pretty much spelled it out, that that, um, unit is gonna remain, uh, the type of housing that it is, they're not gonna kick the residents out, it's gonna continue to be the affordable housing. Um, they just have a little bit more flexibility to go up higher, up to eighty percent rather than sixty, but the overall averages still have to be maintained, and the whole apartment complex will continue to get renovated, so, uh, there's really no change from what the residents will have today, except for maybe some dislocation when their units get renovated.
Has the pilot been satisfied with all that?
Yep, we approved that, um, probably a couple months ago, or last month, so.
Hey, Ed, while you're still there,
Mm-hmm.
Did we get our first payment, uh, for the American Recovery?
Not yet, but soon. The last webinar I saw is that they're still working on processing, and we did get notification that, um, our application for the funds have been accepted, though.
Okay, so we'll have a, sometime soon in the future, we'll have a meeting that, to discuss.
Moderately soon, there's still, there's still a lot of unknowns, and I, I'm gonna be going to some educational seminars over the next month, that should help to clarify a lot of things on that, um, there's some specific sessions on that topic, so.
What we can spend it on and what we can't.
Yeah, I mean, there's things we can clearly spend it on, most of the categories that are very finite and defined are easy, we could spend it a hundred percent on infrastructure. It's that last category, which is responding to the negative effects of the pandemic, where there's a lot of gray areas, and I think that's where there's interest in trying to spend some dollars, but we just have to make sure that it qualifies. So that's what we're gonna be asking the questions on.
Okay, great, thanks.
I do have, um, I know there's been two incidents with, um, kids getting hit, um, by the school there, and is there any, can you give me any details about that?
Yeah, the two things, um, it's been about seven days, two incidents, both incidents are pretty much related to the crosswalk. Um, the second incident is still under investigation. I've coordinated with, uh, McCullough from DPW, city manager, school administration, to come up with the long-term and, and short-term solutions to what we think is a problem, so.
The students were in the crosswalk, they were not walking in the road, they were on the sidewalk and crosswalk?
The first one was involved in a crosswalk, the student wasn't in the crosswalk, the second one, uh, we don't think the student was in the crosswalk at all. Uh, we, we know that both instances are not related to speed at all, so it's a matter of problem solving, what can we do in a couple of days to address it immediately, and then what can we do long-term?
When that school was built, it was only supposed to be for high schoolers, now there's middle schoolers in there, so.
So we have resources available, so we can make an informed decision in case we bring something back to council, so I can inform the city manager. Um, we have, for lack of a better term, uh, traffic experts available, people who, uh, specialize in this, to advise us what they recommend for traffic control devices.
Never could have straightened that road out, I think, no.
Yeah, but, but it was important for me and Jeff McCullough, city manager, what can we do immediately to impact it, what we think is a problem, and so we have a plan for immediate impact.
You can always bring back Safety Patrol.
Yeah, right. While I'm up here, just another, uh, topic, ten eighteen High Street, they began demolition, the house is down, and it's just a matter of them picking up the rubble and taking it away. They told me a couple of days, we'll see how it progresses, I'll keep the city manager informed, so you can keep council informed how that progresses.
Thank you, thank you. If there's any more, I would like to introduce our new city manager, Bill Gamble, and I, uh, asked him to give us a few comments about what he sees in the future, what he expects, whatever you want to talk about, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor and council, I'm very happy to finally be here, it seems like the process takes a, it always takes a long time, but, um, very happy to be here, working with staff. It did feel like I jumped right into it with that roof leaking, I was concerned about the contractor not, you know, buttoning up an area before they leave a section, so I talked to the building maintenance director right off, and then I was, I'll have to talk to Sean, too, but, um, and then we had that unfortunate incident, um, at the end of the day yesterday with the accident. I really appreciate Chief Glass, met with the superintendent today at one, um, came up with some ideas for some short-term solutions and long-term, so, um, I'm hopeful we'll have some things in place and work on addressing that problem. But, very happy to be here, happy to be working with council, um, yeah, so we had department head meetings, I've been scheduling those, um, looking at kind of their capital improvements, also short-term, long-term goals. Uh, we had department head meeting, and fire arbitration kind of ate up most of the day, but it's been a busy two days, and it's, there's a lot going on in the city, I'm excited to be here.
Well, I'm gonna ask the council members if they have any questions for our new city manager.
Um, well, it's only been two days for you, so I'll let you kind of get broken in a little bit.
Thank you.
I'd like to see that we meet with you one-on-one and.
Definitely, yeah, we can, I'll start scheduling those.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, that was gonna be my suggestion, too, is to have, good job.
I, I know in the past that, um, that the previous, um, mayor liked to bring the mayor pro temp into meetings, I was thinking, because we all do have access to you, that we might consider, I would like to go on with the council members and alternate everybody, so that I could have an opportunity with each of the council members and you, and then if they wanted to meet with you by themselves, they could arrange that.
Okay, so, we'll set those up.
I actually don't have anything this time.
Oh, my God.
I know, but I will next time.
Yeah, I like, I think that'd be great to meet with you, um, and I think that'd be great to do it however, whichever way is fine by me, but welcome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Well, if that's all, um, do we have any updates from any other departments that they want to make any comments on?